Always please silence if you leave your cell phones or devices so that we're not interrupted. And Merry Christmas, everyone. We'll open with a word of prayer. Father, during this Christmas season, we're eternally grateful for your plan, for your son, and for the glory and honor that belongs to your name. Father, we're thankful for the state, we're thankful for our leaders today. We pray especially for our children this morning, Lord, for all of those going home from the holidays. And we pray for their safety and well-being, and we pray that they would have a blessed season. God, give us wisdom and discernment in all that we do, bless the work of our hands today, Lord. I pray for my board members, pray that each of our individual talents would make us as a whole better. Thank you again, Father, for every person here today, we pray for every family. We ask that you bless each one. In Christ's name we pray, amen. For members, we have got a pretty robust agenda before us. Dr. Mackey, I'm going to turn it over to you and let me get us sorted.
Yes, ma'am, thanks. So we have one outside, presented at Faulkner University, and I saw Dr. Ledwell from Faulkner, yes. So if you would come up, if you want to just look at this, it's approval of a program. It's a fairly lengthy list, but these are regular, these are kind of a regular approval. They're not new programs, I don't think. I think these are all programs that are already in place that are up for the approval. So Dr. Stengel Edwell, I think you all probably know, used to work for us and lead at Amity Island, and is now at Faulkner. And of course, Alethia Hampton, Dr. Hampton does great work for us here in teacher educator preparation. And I do want to mention that Shavon Harris better not be here, because she was not feeling well, and she was staying just for the work session. And I asked her, I said, "Please go home, I assure you, we can, we'll get through it." And I hate that she's not here, but I only mentioned that, she's probably watching now embarrassed. But I mention it only because if anybody asks, "Well, could Ms. Harris come and answer a question?" She's not here, but Dr. Hampton and I assure you, you can answer anything in that section. So she has another presentation later on the program, but this is about Faulkner University. So Dr. Ledwell, I don't know if there are questions for Dr. Ledwell, or if she wants to talk about any of these programs?
Well, if I can, and I can get just a little bit. I would just like to say to all of the board members first in the morning, and our team was grateful to have an opportunity to go to Faulkner. One thing that we have been doing, we talked a little bit about it last month, but we have been traveling to our institutions because we have been examining the documents on paper. And after the reviews were conducted, if any of the members had questions, they marked it as met pending, and we would have that opportunity to go to the institutions. That has been the most rewarding portion for us because there are things that you just can't learn on paper. So we were able to sit across from the various groups, have authentic conversations. And one thing I would like to say, Faulkner was very transparent, there are some things that they are working on. And we are transitioning from being more compliance monitoring to always investing in that continuous improvement. And so as we visit each of the institutions, what we've learned is that there's not a one thing that they're working on, but there are several different things based upon what's been communicated by their school partners, what's been communicated by their candidates, what they're finding based upon examining their results and looking at that. And so Faulkner has been engaged in that process as well. What we were very glad to see at Faulkner is that when they brought the faculty in, they brought a diverse group of faculty in so that they could talk to us about the things that they are doing, not just in the College of Education, but external in those other colleges as well, as support for those candidates also. The other thing we found is that they have looked at as well what their completers are saying. Dr. Ledwell is being really innovative with bringing in the completers so that they can work with their current candidates and serve as a support base for them as well. So I'm not going to take all the time talking, I'm going to let Dr. Ledwell tell us about Faulkner University and answer any questions that you have.
Thank you for that. I would also like to mention that I have Dr. Jeff Arrington here with me today as well. He is the dean of the College of Arts and Sciences because as Dr. Hampton said, we do have a great partnership between and among the College of Education and our other colleges on campus to make sure that our teachers, our teacher candidates have the background knowledge in the core that they need as well as the educational pedagogy. And we are really proud of the professional learning communities that we have started with our teacher candidates. Before I even left the department, it was on my heart to be passionate about supporting beginning educators through those first three years of induction, the induction years into their career. And so we are bringing our candidates back every other month for a professional learning community where we hear them, we hear what's going on in their schools, what struggles they have, what's going well, and what do they wish that they had gotten before they left their educator prep program. And we are making some changes based on their feedback, so that's going really well.
And if I, one other thing, I just wanted to do a break about Faulkner for a moment. One thing that they've done is that they've restructured some of their field experiences because they heard from the candidates, they heard from their school partners about the need to have the candidates immersed more in the schools. And so they have made some adjustments to the field experiences that their candidates do to have them have that more authentic experience to go out and mirror the theoretical with the actual.
I would also like to congratulate Faulkner on hiring Dr. Davis, who left us. She's a delight and a great contributor, great addition to your faculty and your staff.
Yes, she is, and she is one of our teacher education committee members and works very closely with us.
It wouldn't be, that would be remiss if I didn't remember.
And she's listening, by the way, because she's been texting me this morning, so she hears you.
She's always listening.
Yes, she is.
Any questions? Thank you for being here today, Dr.
We appreciate your consideration.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
So all I, I will say about their program, so there's several on there you see listed, they do include the new elementary. So this will be one of those programs that the new rules, that will be subject to the new science of reading rules. And Faulkner's been engaged with us in helping do that work alone. So I only mention that because we did those, as I mentioned in the meeting, we gave a temporary extension to several institutions. One of the things board members are very clear about is then going forward, everybody has to commit to the new rules before they get approval. So that's why you're not seeing us say, "We want you to give them 12 months to see," because they're following, they're subject to that from the beginning. Those other seven institutions were kind of caught in between rule changes, and that's why we did the temporary. Our next, there are, I know we'll have lunch coming up. I would like to get through two more items before lunch, if possible, and then maybe more. But the next one is Dr. Hampton coming back to talk about those new literacy standards. And I'm not sure if anybody's with her or not, there is a presentation in here within your assembly, and it's also be on the screen. And then we'll have after that, the presentation on summer learning. And Karen is here with us, Dr. Anderson, and so if we get to that, I'd like to do that before lunch also. But if we don't get to it, then no doubt, I know where to find Dr. Anderson, so she'll be back in the way for lunch if she needs to. So, Dr. Hampton's all yours.
Thank you. And so just want to give you an overview first on what has been done in reference to the Alabama Literacy Act. So Alabama Literacy Act and higher education, the goal of giving every child every chance every day. Want to begin with just the overview with Path Forward. The Path Forward is the group that was created. Alabama was invited by the Hunts Institute to be a participant in our second cohort. They already had one cohort, had examined some data there, and they now have the second cohort, and we are a participant there. It utilizes a cohort model with various states to transform teacher preparation. And in so transforming preparation, they want to ensure that each one of these states have a vested interest in making sure that their candidates are addressed of science of reading. The state teams establish their current state context, and they work toward the development of ensuring that they have science of reading in a comprehensive action plan. They're supported through virtual meetings, convenings, and resources. They also have feedback. We recently had an opportunity to attend the Hunts Institute conference this past year. And the state teams are also supported by a national advisory group with experts in reading, policy, and educator preparation. As far as the Path Forward members, I will not read any of those names, but if you take a look at the screen, you can be privy to those individuals who are part of that team. With what has been going on, we have a vision and approach. We have three main action areas. Our first one is to ensure pre-service teachers are ready on day one when they go out to impact student learning in the science of reading. Our second area is to support the development of higher education faculty. And our third area, form higher education task groups. All of this is done with the underlying premise that we want to make sure that those K-6 candidates that complete their programs at institutions are prepared, as I said, on day one to go out and do instruction with these students in the science of reading. So for action area one, last month when we came to the board and we talked about those seven institutions, that had not just been done for the seven, that had been done for all of Alabama institutions. They were required to look at their Barksdale recommendations, to look at the things that had been suggested. We examined their syllabi to make sure that they had aligned those things in terms of their resources they're utilizing, the instruction they're providing, the assignments that they have candidates doing, and the field experiences they will go out and do, and align that with the science of reading. Their textbooks were reviewed. We used the NCTQ review list of science of reading-aligned textbooks. They were classified either as exemplary, acceptable, or unacceptable. We made sure that each institution was only using textbooks that were either acceptable or exemplary. They incorporated the evidence-based content that's aligned to the science of reading with detailed field experiences. So whereas before they may have had just field experiences in reading, now they were aligning their field experiences with the various components. So this field experience may only be focused on, for example, phonological awareness. This one may be focused on comprehension, fluency, et cetera. And so they detail how their field experiences would be laid out with intentionality to make sure that they incorporate those spotlight schools so that their candidates were exposed to the best in science of reading when they went out as well. They incorporated a focus on dyslexia, multilingual, to include multi-dialect and other learning challenges to attune to learning differences. So in so doing, they didn't just want to say, "We're teaching to this group only." They wanted to see what do we do so that our candidates, when finished, are prepared to go out there and work with all students. So they looked at ELLs. They looked at those that may have some challenges when it comes to learning reading. And they adjusted, working with their special education faculty, to see how that they do that. They required the successful completion of Foundations of Reading, test 190 by Pearson, prior to initial certification. We had an opportunity even at the Path Conference, Path Forward Conference, to talk to them about whether or not we should just allow our letters training. And the recommendation was made that we need to ensure that that Foundation of Reading assessment, which they did categorize as an excellent assessment, is still one that is being required by candidates and is. Also with modeling instruction, if they didn't have things already in place for themselves, many of them went out and sought those external resources. So some of them used CER. Some of them used some of the resources that have been developed by our ARI team. Many of them collaborated with one another to say, "What are you using that could benefit us in terms of modeling instruction?" So when we look at area action two, this is supporting higher education faculty development. Several things have been going on here as well. Many of our faculty have trained or signed up for letters training. So those that haven't gone through yet are going to have a cohort where they're going through together to complete letters training. They're hosting and attending science of reading-aligned conferences throughout the state. I didn't think I'd see it, but this year alone in Alabama, we have three conferences. One already took place in October, which was in Birmingham, the Alabama Literacy Association Conference. We have the Science of Reading Higher Education Symposium that will be in UNA in January 2024, and our Literacy Reimagine Conference through the Alabama Chapter of the Reading League is in USA and Mobile, excuse me, in March of 2024. And many of our faculty throughout the state at various institutions are attending all of these constitu-, conferences. And if not all, they are choosing at least one or two of them to attend. They're participating in science of reading podcasts, and they're sharing with one another what they're learning on those podcasts. They're partnering with ARI, regional staff for professional learning opportunities. And they're providing training and support regarding analyzing and interpretation of Foundation of Reading scores. One of the things Dr. Denise Peacock just did in the area of teaching and leading is had a webinar, excuse me, with Pearson where they were taught how to go in, look at their results, and analyze their results so they can make more informed decisions about their candidate performance and what they will focus their instruction on. And Dr. Mackey, last time you said you did not know if Dr. Amy Jones was a phantom person. I am pleased to report that she is actually here with us today. This is Dr. Amy Jones. And I will tell you, she has been a tremendous support. Not only did she hit the ground running, but every time she was like, "What can I do to help? What do you need help with?" She took it upon herself to visit every EPP throughout the state of Alabama, not virtually, in person.
I told you she was real.
Yes, yes. And she was on the ground with support, and not only support, she constantly stayed in contact with us here at the ALSTE to tell us what she was learning, what institutions were saying that they needed, what supports were being provided, what we needed to make sure we were listening to and we were focusing on. So her support has been absolutely astronomical. And so just a few of the highlights there, she also has this EPP Connect. And this one is done virtually, but there are sessions with the faculty where she provides an update because there's often a disconnect between what's happening sometime in K-6 or P-12 world and what's happening in higher education, so that that bridge could be gapped, could be. Thank you. She is actually conducting those sessions. And she has the EPPs invited where she shares that information, even with test results and what's going on. She provides those snapshots of the test results, and as you see the other things there. The other thing, she's encouraging principals and school staff at the K-6 level to willingly partner with EPPs so that their candidates can come in and do many of those things they need to do so that they be prepared for science of reading. So our action area three, this one focuses on our different work groups that we have. We actually have, I'm going to flip over for one second and come back, nine work groups. Tell you what we found out very early with nine work groups, it's too much. They could not work at the same time, it was overwhelming, and many of them were like, "Okay, well, what do we do?" We had to go back in, we worked with Path Forward, many conversations, and we realized the work needed to be scalloped. And so in examining it very closely, thinking about it, talking to other people that have undergone this process, that have done this work in the first cohort, we found out that we really needed to start with Group Two, which is why I've got the Vicky Cordula list right here next to me. And Group Two was reviewing the ELA standards and providing more explicit information. I want to go on record of having been in higher ed for years, having worked here and worked in education. Never before have I seen higher ed come together and work the way that they have with literacy. They literally have exchanged phone numbers, they talk to each other beyond the required work that they are doing. They get on the groups, but they work individually and collectively with one another. They share resources. So when one institution finds out that this is working really well for us, they send it to other institutions. One example, we just shared out, Dr. Vicky Cordula at Auburn had done a job description.
Job search.
Job search. And so she willingly shared what they had written in their job description so that other institutions, and looking for someone to be a literacy instructor, could also look at, making sure these components were included. They have been phenomenal. They've talked to one another, and it has been a blessing. Just to give you a higher, higher overview of what all of them are doing, Group Two needed to start first, and they have done a Herculean job. Then we're going to go to Group One, which I know seems a little backwards numerically, but it works. They're going to review the institutional instructional standards and materials and establish protocols for review. Group Three is going to start talking about how do we monitor this process? And in monitoring, they're not going to just be focusing on checkbox, 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 we hit these. But how do we stay engaged in continuous improvement? So that after we've hit these, how do we continue to grow and expand and become better? Group Four, design a monthly method for measuring the implementation of Barksdale Report and evaluated. So as I said, we've done that first evaluation of the Barksdale Report. But Dr. Mackey said at this board meeting, he said, "They've made improvements, but they're not there because we continue what we want to grow and make those improvements." With Groups Five through Nine, these are ones that are really a bit farther off. Because one, we're already working with Pearson for the mapping of the Foundations of Reading standards. They've done that already with the KPA's. But because we're just adopting the standards, they haven't been done. It's going to take some time for them to reflect on what we have once it's adopted to see the alignment with that and our Foundation of Reading assessment. Group Six, that's going to be, okay, we had NCTQ to review the textbook, but what about those best practices, those other materials, and professional development? So that group will continue to catalog and look at the resources that are available. And Group Seven, those protocols for reporting the implementation of the Alabama Literacy Act and science of reading in Alabama. One thing that we're working with the EPPs that we want to shift is that so many wonderful things are going on, but the story is not being told widely enough. So how do we get the information out about what's going on? Group Eight is recommending those additional professional development opportunities. And Nine will be reviewing those standards for graduate programs because we don't want to leave that out. Once we have the baseline of knowledge, how do we advance their knowledge and make sure that they're continually growing in their field? So now we're going to begin talking about Group Two and the standards development. And before Dr. Cordula begins, I also want to acknowledge that we also have some additional members from Group Two that are present with us today, and I ask that they will please stand. I'm going to turn it over now to Dr. Cordula.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing us to be at the table. I think one of the biggest impressions that we've had in higher ed is that we are invited to the table to have these discussions, and we really appreciate that. We are represented from multiple universities, as Alethia had mentioned, that we really haven't started talking across universities, which is wonderful. We have Faulkner University, University of North Alabama, University of West Alabama, and then Alabama University. We also have two members, and that's why they're hesitant to stand, that are from additional groups that we brought in as well because we knew that we needed a collaborative person and an early childhood person as well to continue some of these discussions. So our timeline, and I think that this is really important that we look at because it wasn't done in haste, it was really done intentionally. When we were tagged to become part of the task force, our initial meeting was just to meet and to talk about what our expectations were, to kind of grapple with what the call was. As you saw, some of those calls for the task were kind of robust, as Alethia has mentioned. And we had eight EPP members, we also had several ARI members, and then Path Forward members. And so we had a really hefty group, but what we found was that we needed more. It wasn't just dependent upon what we were saying, it was dependent upon what multiple universities were saying and multiple entities. So we started with reviewing standards and syllabes. We looked at Texas, Ohio, Colorado, North Carolina. Some of them have exemplary syllabes which already had standards, and we really wanted to see what standards they were already developing. And what we found is a lot of them were aligned with the KPS. And so we took that into consideration as we started to kind of fudge out what we were looking at doing. On June 7th, we met again, we met monthly or bimonthly for some times, but on June 7th, we met again to start talking about the language that would be in the standards and building the progression. And what we wanted to do was to have this progression that allowed our pre-service teachers to first recognize what the standard was saying, then be able to explain it, and then apply it. And that was really important for us because we wanted to be at that application, but we knew that we had to have these steps in place first. We then went back and we reviewed the NCTQ National Council on Teacher Quality Report. We also went back and reviewed the Barksdale Report. And then we looked at the KPSs again, the Knowledge and Practice Standards for Teachers of Reading, taking all of this into consideration before we even began drafting our standards. On August 2nd, Alethia said that many members were going to be joining us from other task force. And we embraced that, and we wound up with 15 other EPPs that came in, two additional ARI members, and then multiple Path Forward members. We held our first face-to-face meeting, which was at UAV, it was a half-day session. And what we found from that meeting was that we needed more time. Not longevity of time, but just more time so we can have deeper conversations. Then on August 28th, we began to develop the framework for it. We looked at the standards and substandards, and then indicators. As you looked at the standards, you'll see that there are multiple indicators because one standard would not have been enough for all of it. We needed to break it down so it was more manageable for our candidates and more manageable for assessment at higher ed. On October 1st, we started preparing for our breakout sessions, that would be a face-to-face meeting at Auburn. We spent an entire day, and we had over 50 people in attendance. In our breakout sessions, we looked at the standards, we also looked at the codes. And then we looked at the actual vocabulary that was embedded in it to develop a glossary. And that's the last stage that we're working at right now. On October 2nd, we met for our breakout sessions, and I have to say, it was an amazing session. Just the conversations that were generated within our meetings to bring everyone together from collaborative to early childhood and elementary. A lot of the things that we didn't think about were enlightened at that point because we were looking at it through, you know, just one lens. And so having multiple people there was really important. Once we had our standards, we did some revisions to it from the October 2nd meeting. And then we asked Amy, thank you very much, if she would send it out to the ARI regional specialist and then provide feedback on the standards, and they did as well. Some of the things that came back were, you know, language or structure, making sure that our progression was where it was. And then we did another meeting where we revised and then accepted those standard changes. So we had many iterations of this, and this was not done in isolation. This was done across multiple universities, and I really wanted to stress that because that was empowering for us. This is where we finally landed, this is a draft. This is standard one, and this is for the universities to look at, not necessarily for all of you, but I wanted you to see what it looked like. So standard one was our Foundation of Literacy acquisition. We stayed with the verbs, recognize, explain, and apply, as I mentioned before. In the left column, we have our indicators that are supportive for our standard. We have application by teacher candidates, which is in our second column. Recommended coursework in our third column. Where it should be suggested for field work in our fourth column. And then suggested course sequences in our fifth column. I want to say that in the last three columns, we had multiple, multiple conversations. And the reason being is that we wanted the university still to have some autonomy on where and when, but we knew that we needed to streamline it for submissions for students who are transferring universities. And so if a university chooses to do it outside of the suggested sequence of courses, they will have to develop a protocol that will be submitted to the State Department to state where they are. That way, if there is an issue or a student who transfers, they can see where it was taught at that point. And then our final document is the one that you have, or you should have in front of you, which is the Higher Education Task Force Standards Document, the draft. You'll notice that it starts with the standard again, the Foundations of Literacy, has three indicators. Standard Two doesn't have any indicators, but Standard Four or Three will have multiple indicators. So it just depends on what the standard is and how many indicators were, based on how it had to be unpacked because of the depth of knowledge that needed to take place in that.
Yes, so as you see, this group has been quite busy. And although you saw the dates on the timeline, what's not reflected there are the many dates when they were even in subcommittees working because on one of the calls, they realized it was too enormous for this just to be where we just met on these scheduled dates to get this task done. It wouldn't have been accomplished. So the subgroups would also meet in various iterations between that to ensure that we were here where we needed to be today.
I just want to make a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
In line with the coursework recommendations, I think that's going to be helpful because it allows the faculty to know exactly what they should be doing in order to address that standard. And then secondly, with the field work, giving the college or university the autonomy to know where it should fit based upon a course, I think that's great. So I applaud the work of your group. Thank you, thank you so much.
Yes. So, you know, as I said, the EPPs have made significant progress.
Let me just, I wanted to make a comment and just say thank you. I know you're here today, but would you please share a thank you to your colleagues? I know you're here today, but would you please share a thank you to your colleagues? Because, and particularly Dr. Fairbrother. I know that Auburn, along with some other universities, offered to host. And I realize that that is taking time in your facilities, your organization, time for faculty to be away. And it is not lost on this board that, you know, this is not normal.
It was something that was valued.
For our universities to come together in this way. And I just wanted to say that I truly appreciate the amount of work and organization to get everybody there and working together.
It was definitely a team effort.
Yes, ma'am.
As a previous dean of teacher education, I want to say this was a miracle. Just phenomenal. It's just, it exceeds our expectations, just great work.
I have to say, we are all very proud of the work that came out of it.
And in line with that, what I thought about is normally colleges and universities work in silos. But you saw a unified effort, and that's going to then improve our entire state.
So while we're bragging, let me say something too. And I do want to point something out. If you look at the actual code too, we want to look just at that. So just kudos. And to reiterate everything that has been said, I, we definitely want to get them on the national stage, this process. They have presented, I mean, they have been recognized for the Path4, which is a group of about a dozen states working together. But I can tell you that I go to meetings and many of my colleagues say, "Don't even try to interact with the higher ed people because they don't want to talk to you." And that's unfortunate because that's counterintuitive and it's counterproductive. And we found the exact opposite. Like they have been willing to very much dig in and do the hard work. And there will be more work to do in '24, and I would suspect even beyond that. But we're committed to continuing to get it right. I'll point out something remaining aboard. When the Alabama Literacy Act passed, there's a lot of provisions in there. This is just a small part of it. And it only applies to public schools and public institutions. So this board came back and said, yes, but to certify teachers, those private institutions also have to participate. And so you put in the code that all the same responsibilities would be shared with our private institutions too. And so by doing this, I know in most cases, just the way the law works, the legislature certainly has more, a wider, a broader stroke of power, I guess, than the board. But in this case, that is not true because the board has the authority over who gets to award teaching, or who gets to recommend people for teaching certificates. And the legislature does not. And so by applying this to the code, you are actually applying a broader swath by including all of our private institutions and not just the public institutions. I draw your attention to the last page under the EPP reading standards. So, you know, and it's technically page 403.87. That's our numbering system. Not our numbering system, this is just a code numbering system. Legislature did give us. But we have added in there this committee. Now, the last piece is three queuing. So there's been a lot of talk about three queuing. So maybe no, and I know in the retreat, we're going to talk about the commission report. But there's one recommendation in the commission report is that the legislature banned three-queuing instruction in our institutions. For the public institutions, doesn't affect the private institutions. But this committee, we've gone ahead and put it in here. So there's really nothing, no reason for them to even take it up because we are seeing three-queuing, utilization of three-queuing approaches prohibited in Alabama's EPPs. Just to be very clear, it's not long and wordy and cumbersome and people don't understand it. It's prohibited. And it would apply to all the institutions, public and private. I don't, we've not gotten any pushback on that, but I want to point that out because other states are talking about, you know, they're doing this and doing that. And we're just, with the board's approval of this next year, we're just moving forward and getting it done rather than just talking about ways to do it. So that is one. Obviously, it's a much longer change in the code. These ladies and their colleagues know it much better than I and can ask you questions. But I did want to put a last line out. This will come to you in January for the, they announce the intent to approve. And then assuming the board approves it, it'll be open for 45 days, public comment. And we'll come back to you in March for final approval. They have done, Dr. Chestnut, you're right, miraculous work to get it done. But it was really important to me, to push because I wanted this to be finalized and done as close to the beginning of the legislative session as possible. So we cannot legally, we can't finish the rule until March. But if you approve it in January, then when the legislature convenes in February, they will know, oh, that's already been done by the state board. And that's something we don't have to deal with. And so that was one of the reasons we pushed to try to get it there as quickly as possible. Among other, obviously, we also just want to get it out for the institutions before the start of the next school year.
There's no reason, though, that the EPTs can't begin to go ahead and prepare, plan, and take steps towards the good collaborative work that they see, you know, that they need to go ahead and make some changes correct.
I think that many of the universities are already aligning the KPSs. And if you look at the standards, the standards are then aligned to the KPSs. And so I think that this is going to be a very easy transition for the universities to adopt the standards because they're already using some of the information, the language that's already there.
Any other questions, board members? Dr. Mackey?
Ma'am, that's it. So it is, thank you very much, and thank you, Dr. Jones.
Thank you.
So this, it is new, straight up. I know Dr. Anderson will be with us after lunch if you want to wait. This is a, several, you recall, it's probably been three months ago, we did report on the summer reading. And some board members said, well, can we also, even though it's not as, it's a little newer, but, and this is our first year really doing the math rollout with the Office of Mathematics Improvement, but could we see the math also? And so Dr. Anderson's prepared and headed, ready to go. So I don't know if you want to try to go ahead and do that?
I don't agree.
Okay. So Dr. Anderson, if you'll come up. Another superstar who does great work for us, and they're doing a lot really fast. So she's managing two committees. She has an elementary committee. Let her go ahead and pull that up for us, but while I'm talking, just introducing her. But we have an elementary committee that's working on the actual assessments, the primary materials, the interventions, screeners, all of those things. And then we have another committee that's working on higher ed standards, just like the reading higher ed standards you just heard. So we're already doing the math also. We're doing both of those at the same time. So she's leading all that work. She's rolled out this year over 250 schools, math coaches. And she's doing great work on summer reading, summer math too. So they're pulling up your presentation. And Dr. Anderson, I'm going to just turn it over to you and be quiet.
Awesome, thank you so much. I really appreciate this opportunity. Good, it's still morning, it's afternoon. Good afternoon to everyone. The Office of Mathematics Improvement is really in full swing. This time last year, there was myself and assistant ASA. And we were in the midst of hiring. So we are now to the point where we have, hold on, I'll just get to the presentations. So we're now to the point where we have 108 full elementary support schools and the 200 math coaches. I do want to stress that this time last year, we had zero. So we have gone from zero to 200 very quickly. With 18 regional coordinators and their pictures, their big emojis are shown there just so that you can see sort of the distribution as to where they are. We work very closely with AMPSTI in the training and the support of those coaches. And we're looking at naming our next cohort of full elementary support schools, additional math coaches. And to support the additional math coaches, we will increase our ranks to 25 regional coordinators. As part of an overview, just wanted to share that this past summer, we were thrilled to be invited to present a pre-conference session, instruction, coaches, and camps. OMI! The impact of the Numeracy Act. It was very well attended. I also felt very strongly reacting to the direction, really, here from leadership that we needed to have strands available for our teachers, for our elementary math coaches, for our district and school administrators. So you'll see from that graphic there that there are 12 breakout sessions that address all of those different state code groups. And in terms of our summer math programs numbers, just wanted to share, this time last year, no one really was prepared to implement a math camp. We were all learning, we're all trying to ensure that we were getting all of those components together. So I'm really pleased with these numbers in terms of a start. You can see the number of LEAs that reported data, the sites that supported a summer math program. There were some schools that supported independent sites. And then there were some districts that combined schools to one central location. And then you can see the number of schools that actually sent students to a math program. The number of students attending, the days each student attended, you can see is listed there, and the number of programs. And we're collecting that data also this summer as well. There's lots of research out about the effectiveness of summer math programs and how many hours they should be and so forth. So we wanted to continue to share this data and to collect it as well, just so we could see how we're lining up in terms of research.
Ma'am, are you going to be looking at this outcome data? When you get the A-CAP scores on mathematics?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, yes, ma'am. So you can see now, again, this time last year, no one really understood the magnitude of having a summer math camp. So the fact that we have this kind of data is really remarkable. The numbers are not going to add up to any of those on previous or future slides because for assessment data, this is for those students who took a pre-test and a post-test. There are some students that might have just taken a pre-test or maybe just taken a post-test, and those scores have been removed. But we wanted to see true growth by grade level. And we were really very pleased with this as a benchmark, especially for fifth grade, knowing that the Numeracy Act is where we are expecting our fifth graders to demonstrate proficiency. And the summer math camp is one last opportunity, really, for students to have an opportunity to demonstrate proficiency. The summer guidance, I just wanted to share this slide because this was truly a collaborative effort. You could see the different sections of the State Department that really came together. I'm just so proud of the OMI team, the regional coordinators that came together along with these existing sections. We really worked hard to be a part of the team to present this guidance. And we are looking forward to refreshing that guidance in preparation for this summer 2024. So the Alabama Numeracy Act provides that students in grades four and five, if they were recommended for a summer math camp, that they should have specific instruction in problem solving. And so the Office of Mathematics Improvement, the regional coordinators, really stepped up to the plate to produce a curriculum that addresses this need. And it's called Fun Zone. And I've got some details in a future slide. But this is just the unit in a nutshell to begin. Problem solving is not just a few questions at the end of the chapter. We're going to do the word problems now. That's not what it's all about. We really want to develop a mindset, a culture for problem solving. So that is a significant part of this particular unit, along with the actual curriculum. Support A and Support B are to address those students who are in summer school, either approaching proficiency or already proficient.
So let me get back. I don't want it to be glossed over. You wrote curriculum.
Correct.
For the math camps.
Correct.
So this year, when math camps take place, they'll, we hope that those schools will be using this curriculum.
Yes, and we are also in the process of writing another curriculum so that school districts will have an option. So the standards remain the same.
Right.
We really just want to have different options and a different focus. So this one is more of a fun zone, more of gaming. You can see from the cover, just the perspective. This summer has an arts focus.
Okay.
And we've already had conversations with Andy Meadows and the Arts Alliance to provide resources across the state. So our hope is to continue to add to this library or this portfolio of curricula. I've got some talented regional coordinators who are truly writing curriculum.
That was going to be my next question, is who's writing the curriculum?
The regional coordinators are.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. And so the graphic on the right is just a screenshot of a few different media, just some feedback on the unit. There was really overwhelming support for the use of that unit. Once it was written, the regional coordinators went across the state to provide professional learning so that teachers will feel comfortable using the resources. And they are made available on a pamphlet that OMI has online. And there is a video link that you can watch at your leisure. The idea behind the unit is that there's an eight-year-old named Avery Jones who is interested in not just going to the mall to shop, but just, hey, it'd be great to have a Fun Zone that's just for us kids. And this kind of morphs into the city council blessing this plan. And Avery going online and asking students to submit and asking students to help design. And so what students are doing are actually using those fourth and fifth grade standards to see, okay, how much area is needed for the bowling alley? How much is needed for the cafe? And they're actually constructing. And then there's a flexible space where the students can design anything else that they would like. And so it was just amazing to see how schools really just took this to another level. And there are a number of teachers who are actually using this curriculum during the school year as well. But there are videos there, and there's an actual email address, where students could actually email Avery and Avery actually responded. It was really a neat feature. And this is just some additional data. There's tasks, there are tasks embedded in the curriculum that are wrapped around the standards. And you can see the growth in each of those different areas. And just another project of the Office of Mathematics Improvement, one of our areas of focus this year, in addition to tier-one instruction, is just student discourse. So to encourage a conversation that usually happens when families are together at Thanksgiving, we want to give them something to talk about. So we had an idea for this theme, Numeracy November. And it's, again, the regional coordinators are just phenomenal. They took an idea of just suggesting different topics, and this grew to a curriculum as well. And this is, these are also materials that can be found on the pamphlet. And that's all I have. Thank you. Thank you. I'm just blessed to work with a wonderful team. Thank you to Dr. Mackey and everyone for their leadership and support.
I think we should commend them as well when you consider that all of this was created within this timeframe. You and your staff should definitely be commended for an outstanding achievement.
Please tell the regional coordinators, we're urged all the time to look outside of Alabama at curriculum. And I have said many times, we have talent in Alabama. We do not have to look outside to buy curriculum appropriate and written in a way, you know, that suits our families, our culture, and our high standards. So please share with you. So please share with your regional folks our appreciation for taking the time to write curriculum.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And along with that, let me say, I like the way, in fact, you all knew something needed to be done, but you got with ARI, and you all worked together in those something gaps. That saves a lot, to look at an overall framework, so I appreciate all of you.
Anyone else?
I think it's a good time to break for lunch. If you guys agree with that, I'll let you choose when you want to come back.
We will come back at 1 o'clock.
Today, Barton Academy for Advanced World Studies, Mobile County School System. He'll be receiving 2023 Mathematics Presidential Award Finalist, State School Board District 5. As I recall, he was Teacher of the Year finalist. Remember meeting him? Super, super gentleman. Our eighth item is a resolution in recognition of Melanie Demmler, Hewitt Trussville High School, Trussville City School System will be receiving a 2023 Science Presidential Award Finalist, State School Board District 7. The ninth item on the agenda is a resolution in recognition of Brandon Renfro, Geraldine High School, DeKalb County School System. Brandon Renfro will be receiving the 2023 Science Presidential Finalist Award for State Board District 8. Number 10 is a resolution in recognition of January 2024 as the gifted education month in Alabama schools. Number 11 is a resolution recognizing Jasper City Schools as the first school system in Alabama to achieve a Level 1 certification in Marzano High Reliability Schools. Dr. Mackey, can you talk to us about what that means?
Yes, ma'am. So, the Marzano model is a really good instructional model. We've got several schools that are working with the Marzano group on becoming certified. And they're just the first ones to finish. Actually, we have a second one that's finished now. But they were the first in the state to finish, and so we're recognizing them and be glad to recognize the other. I can't remember where it is now. And then that same model, though, you may remember last year we recognized Walker County for something a little different, but they're also following the Marzano model, so.
Perfect. All right. We are now down to item number 12, which will be the release of the report state cards and federal report cards. So, Dr. Mackey, who would you like to come to the table?
Dr. Van Pelt, have you come up? Marcus Van Pelt. Each of you, well, let him talk about this. He leads accountability for us. As you know, we have two accountability systems, and so we have a state one, we have a federal one. The feds say there is no federal accountability, there's only state accountability. So, there's actually a state system set up by the legislature and a state system set up under ESSO. But we call them state and federal because it just helps us keep them separate. But Dr. Van Pelt does an excellent job, by the way. He's very quiet. You don't hear from him that much. And he has also a wonderful wife. A lot of people in here have wonderful spouses. But he works for AASB, and so you've also encountered her a lot over there. Now, he does a good job for them, I know. Dr. Van Pelt, may I turn it over to you?
Yes, please. Thank you for allowing me to come before you. We're just going to look at the federal indicator scores, and then we'll look at the final grade as well as the state information. And then I'll leave. Do you want to ask some questions? So, what we're looking at here is the federal accountability system. You'll see here that we have the indicators, six indicators that we use, as well as the total points earned down at the bottom. And in the middle, you'll see the indicator max points that you can get from that particular indicator category. And then you'll see the points that we actually earned over to the side. So, here you'll see that in achievement, we've got 12.35 points for academic growth. We've got 24.31. And then in progress in English language learning, 4.07. Chronic absenteeism, 8.21. Graduation rate, 26.46. And college and career readiness give us a 7.91. And when we total that up, we get 83.31 points for an overall score of an 83 for the federal reporting system. And then for our state, you'll notice that these look very similar. So, you'll see that academic growth, progress in English language proficiency, chronic absenteeism, graduation rate, and CCR are all the same. Only difference here is that our academic achievement is a little different. Different calculation on that one. So, here you'll see that that one is actually 12.48 points. When we add that up, we get 83.44, which is also an 83 with a letter grade of B on this side of the state report card. So, I'll allow any questions that you might have if you have any questions of me. Just to give you some background, we did have an uptick in achievement, a very small uptick in growth. We had a decline in graduation rate. We had an uptick in CCR. Chronic absenteeism stayed exactly the same with regard to points. And then for PELP, we had just a slight decrease. So, pretty much in the same range. I think our points for state, I think they were 84 last year. So, we did drop a point. And it's probably more like half a point, but then you round it and it becomes a whole point. So, that's kind of the comparison. So, yeah, any questions?
And that was going to be my question. What was the comparison?
Yes, ma'am.
This will go live at 3 o'clock today. It's on the website. And you have, yeah, in your folder, you have a printout of your district. You know, I sent you, we posted on Singly the whole state. So, you can see the whole state. You can also, this is just your district. And then at 3 o'clock, it'll go live. And of course, you can see that the underlying data. We printed all the underlying data out. It takes reams and reams of paper. But you can go in there if you want to look at particular subgroups and those kinds of things. I suspect there'll be more questions as you get a chance to dig through it. And we'll be, of course, follow up with the press. A press release will go out later this afternoon, too. And it goes live at 3 o'clock.
Yes, sir. And let me also compliment my staff. They are absolutely wonderful. Just giving me all the assistance that I need to make this, bring this report card out there. Just an awesome staff. There's only three of us right now, but they do an amazing job. They pulled some extra hours for us. Just really had a commitment to get this done. So, I really appreciate them. So. So.
Dr. Vanderplicht, I appreciate your report, it's a great report. I have to look over, there's some different reports. I would like a report of the priority schools as a separate report. Because we just passed those rules and the guidelines. And I'm certain, you know, the responsibility that every school now has to notify those parents in the priority schools of their opportunity for transfer is supposed to be by law by January one, which will be very difficult for them to do. And I hope the public understands some of that notification will be delayed because of some of our process, which is unavoidable.
Yes, sir.
But we do recognize that that notification, though it's in the law on January one, maybe, I mean, most people are not going to be working much after the law. In the public schools.
Right, the release of the report card is a little close to the proximity of schools getting out.
Like a day.
Right.
Hours.
Yeah, because we got some kids getting out, actually, tomorrow that are not coming back. And I think we have some other system.
Some getting out today.
Yeah, getting out today, yeah. So, do you want to speak to that?
What you said was absolutely correct. Being that the board thankfully passed our rule change today, which gives us now the opportunity to notify those schools because we changed from failing schools to priority schools during the board meeting. So, that is the information Dr. Mackey was sharing during the board meeting, that on January 2nd, we will be notifying those districts, and they have to January 16th to actually notify the students.
They have to January 16th.
Yes, that is based on us just doing the rule today. Because we knew they were going to be gone, so there's no one to notify.
Well, I knew the old rules, January 1st, I'm glad to hear that. And there's not a problem with us getting the priority schools list, the board members are releasing that today, is there?
Absolutely not. The report card will be live with all of this data at three o'clock. And being that the new rule is that it's all DNF schools, it's just merely filtering down to Ds and Fs, and that is the priority school list.
I know, that's something big interest, that's why I mentioned in the meeting today that the rule talks about transfer, but there are overriding rules that each local school system can set those definitions of who can get transferred.
Well, there are some options that's actually in the code, and that's the great thing that Marcus and his team has done. They have a draft letter for the districts, that all they have to do is place it on their letterhead, and it gives the options that are available, such as transfer to a school within their district, or, you know, the tax credits. All of that information is in the communication for them. And the only thing they would have to do, if they choose to do so, is copy that letter and place it on their letterhead. And from there, those parents will have until superintendent's wanted to make certain that it's very valid that they had that prior to the dismissal of school. And I think the parents will have, excuse me, until March to notify the schools. And that gives the districts the opportunity to plan accordingly for staffing.
Well, I'm sure Dr. Vanderplicht would have it all done.
He has it done, and his staff is wonderful. It's ready to go out right now, but it's just not fair to hit send on something of that nature tomorrow morning when they're getting out many of the districts tomorrow.
I said more to, for our audience and the press, because I knew he had a chance to, us to acknowledge his good work and our transparency as a school board. And the new laws.
Exactly, thankful to Marcus and his team, and under Shanti's leadership. So, very thankful for the team for working to get both of these systems ready to go and to give the public the necessary information to make informed decisions about teaching and learning.
I'm glad we use the nomenclature priority schools instead of failing schools.
Thankful to the board, Dr. Mackey, and our legislators, yes. We're very thankful for that.
But still, the transfer and the implications of being in that list.
Absolutely.
With individual families are significant.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much for your response to me.
Thank you.
Dr. Vanderplicht, one question. As I look at the grades that are maybe the Ds and the Fs, if you all analyze, as you had up, the different categories, are you seeing that there might be one area, maybe student achievement, that's causing the Ds and Fs or chronic absenteeism? Have you all had a chance to dig or drill in on what perhaps caused the low grade, if that makes any sense?
Um, are you?
Does their category, go back to your, go back to your slide, on the state.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, on the state, I see that there are those indicators. All right, so if a school has a D or an F, have you all yet looked at what caused the D or F? Maybe was it more towards the points that they got relative to academic growth or progress in English language proficiency? Have you all had a chance to drill down yet?
We haven't looked at it as a.
Or will you all do that?
Yes, ma'am. We haven't had a chance to look at it as a group. But we do, we have done a lot of technical assistance with systems to kind of let them know. Because a lot of times, they, you're looking at a percentage and you're looking at points because they got multiplied by a particular weight.
Exactly.
But when you go back to those unweighted scores, that's when you can kind of see where you had some improvement or where you may have dropped off.
So, I guess what I'm getting at, because I talked to Mr. Martin about this, looking at maybe schools that I have that maybe have a D or an F, to try to determine as we go forward, the areas where they are weak.
Right.
So that we can look at improving going forward.
Absolutely.
We have the information, and that information actually will be pushed out as well on the website, as it relates to each particular school and district. So, we, you can tell based upon each indicator where they may have decreased or increased or what have you. I will say this from the preliminary steps, and as Marcus stated, we just finished, well, the LEAs just finished validating all that.
Their data, okay.
So, now that they've completed validating everything and pushing it out, we then will do a deeper dive into the analysis. But in many of the cases, what has occurred is that there are very, particularly on the high school side of the house, that graduation rate went down a bit. Where you notice that right now, it's worth 30 plus. And so, as a result, some of them kind of slipped out, thinking because of the COVID.
Right.
Period of time, because remember, the graduation rate really is a year in a rear.
Yes.
Not last year.
Right, correct, everything in rear.
So, I think COVID impacted quite a bit of that. And which in some cases also impacted some of their CCR points this way. So, and then, in some of the elementary side of the house, in some cases, it was like chronic absenteeism, they needed points as they did previously. So, some of them kind of slid in that particular area as well. So, it just depends on the school and depends on the ELA, and particularly indicators, you know, that would have impact on that overall grade.
And that's why I was asking, but you said that information has been sent out, so they'll be able to analyze. And if they need support, they can reach out.
And let me say this as well, each when the school validates the information, they are looking, we provide them with what you're talking about. They know specifically, each and each area indicator, and how many points they receive. They can even drill down to the student level. To see specifically how many students, you know, had this particular level.
In the category, right.
Yes, ma'am. So, that gives them an opportunity to compare last year to this year, see if there was growth or there wasn't growth. So, they have all that information as well when we provide it in our system to them. So, they have, they have seen it, and they know exactly, and that's what Marcus is talking about. Some of them have reached out and called, because we've done a couple office hours with them to show them how to look at their data. And so, some have really called and said, can you explain to me what, you know, what exactly what I'm seeing, how many points did I really get, what can I do to better, you know, ourselves for next year? And we provided that as well, but we'll dig even deeper into that.
Okay, thank you, that's very helpful. Thank you for sharing that.
And just to add one layer to what Shanti has presented, working with Dr. Shields on the support side of the house. Being that the districts just finalized their data validations on yesterday, I've had conversations with her in reference to a support spreadsheet that I'm developing. And the purpose of that will be to do exactly what you said, to align the supports across the department, wherever those indicators live, such as we have a EO group that's led by an administrator. They are able to see what's going on in those districts, and then drill down to the schools who may not have had the necessary points to make certain that those coordinators under Sean's leadership, Sean is right here, we can make certain that Maria Franco's team is actually providing the necessary support for those individuals in there. And we're doing the same thing with the chronic absenteeism, with K. Warfield, the graduation rate, along with Shanitra Dees with our CCR, trying to make certain that the sections that are actually providing the support, they have the spreadsheet of the data that's necessary so that they can organize the supports for those schools that are, I'm not going to say struggling, but the schools that need a little more support than the traditional schools. So, that's the next step. But I've already started that process with Dr. Shields on unvalidated data. So, now, I'm going to layer it with what was finalized on yesterday. And then, they will partner with Marcus to say exactly what went on with the points and all of that. That's how we do our cross-sectional support here to make certain that the data owners across the department are working with accountability to give the districts the necessary support.
And as a matter of fact, just one last tidbit. For your information, Marcus, it's actually, it's probably about next three months, is it not playing?
Yes.
It's, we're building a heat building, I'm not doing it. Marcus and his team, they are building a dashboard that will assist in that, in that analyze, integration of that data, as well as what Ms. Marcus said.
And if you guys remember that great heat map that we presented to the board that kind of plotted, Dr. Vanderplicht's the person that developed it. He's our tableau expert that's able to go in and design heat maps and all to plot where we need certain things across the state. That, he's an expert in that, and we're using that information to even build up on that dashboard. So, we're going to make certain that the tools are there to, so be very helpful, yes.
And it's easy to multiply and see the weakest area is academic achievement, which would be 61% versus our 83 over. So, when you see, obviously, if you take any of those numbers and multiply by five and get the average, that's 20%. So, the, obviously, the academic achievement is at 61. something compared to our overall 83. So, we can see the statewide weaknesses already, and I'm certain you've already computed that.
Yes, sir, and you're exactly right.
Which is actually right, it's more than the number, right?
The sixty, the number you quoted is correct.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
The graduation rate really is not our weakness.
I was saying, it's a question.
The academic achievement, what goes into that, remind me?
Math and ELA, so we're looking at 330 levels. Yes, sir. And ACT eleven, and then alternates.
Okay, just, I wanted that, because I know our press is writing all this down, so.
Got you.
Are there any other questions? Great, thank you, Dr. Vanderplicht.
Thank you.
Appreciate it so much.
As we, as he steps away, it's time to. To take that, I know you'll take it, and there's so many ways to look at it. But just from the top end view, just so you know, we did have a pretty substantial increase in number of A schools this year. We went from 203 last year to 262 this year. We had a decrease in the number of DNF schools. And if my math is right, and my memory, it's, we went from 219 DNF schools to 206. But they didn't write it down. So, so, so we did, we're seeing the trend again moving in the right direction. More, more schools doing better, and fewer schools doing worse. So, we continue to work on that.
And Dr. Mackey, you know, we discussed the significance of the period of time the superintendents had needed to verify versus some of them publishing it. And let's not go any further than that, but you and I, somebody posted on Facebook, their progress of their school system, and that's something I'm certain you're going to take care of for us.
We are going to move on to item number 13, which is cellphone usage in schools discussion. Dr. Mackey?
This is, this is just a fairly new topic that is just for discussion and maybe for future discussions, so y'all can think about. They, there were several of us, including Ms. West, Dr. Reynolds was there, I'm trying to think who else could say that. Ms. Segler was there, she's not with us today, at the Excel and Ed Conference in Atlanta last month. And we had already been talking about cellphones in schools, and it became like they had three sessions that brought up cellphones in schools. So, I thought it would be a good item for us to talk about. Ms. West can tell a little more about kind of the feeling of those in the room. But essentially, there are a lot of states talking about cellphones in schools. And in most cases, it's all negative, you know, students having them out, they're not paying attention, lots of issues with, I mean, we've even had issues where students sent threatening messages to other students during the school day. And of course, our local districts are having to deal with that. But the, one district in Alabama has completely eliminated cellphones in their schools, Montgomery County. This year, it is so far reported, you know, been very successful. We did have to deal with, I only had to deal with one very adamant parent complaint for the rest of the year, but you have 26,000 students, one parent complaint's not bad. I suspect they had more at the principal level, just one kept sending things to me. But, but we've had no negative communication in the last several weeks, and lots of positive communication. In Montgomery County, what they do is students have to, they zip their phones in these magnetic bags that don't allow the phones to have a signal. The school district can lock and unlock the bags using a tele, tele radio signal. And so, they basically, they're locked up. The students have them, they possess them, but they can't use them until the school unlocks them. We have other districts that are not allowing phones during class. And so, you've probably seen, I've been in a lot of schools where they have to bring them in and say, put them in a little pouch, coming in the room. So, they can't get access to them during class, but then they're allowed to have them in the hallways. Florida's legislature has essentially outlawed the use of cellphones in the classroom. They do allow the use in the hallways and at breaks and lunch and those kind of things. So, Montgomery County doesn't allow any of that. So, Ms. Swan did some research for us. And we really, the board cannot basically outlaw the use of cellphones in schools. But we could do some things, like maybe require the districts to have a policy on it. You know, there are some things we could do, and I'm not asking you to do all that. I'm just saying, I wanted to have a discussion about it and continue that. Because I do think that all of the evidence seems to be that if students don't have cellphones, things are better during the day. And for me, I actually really favor what Montgomery County's done, where students also don't have them at lunch in the hallway because of what we've seen in other places, as soon as they get that phone, then they're all on their phones, and then we have problems that occur at the next period because of a text message that was sent during break, or during hall change, whatever. And so, just have it, getting rid of them. Now, would be good, I'm not saying it would be easy. Many of our students are tethered to their phones as we go. But again, we do have a demonstration case that it can be done. I've talked to probably, not a lot, a half dozen superintendents, all of whom said they had problems with cellphones, all of whom have had to deal, have tried to deal with it in some way. Most of them by doing the pouches and saying, you know, you can't have it with you during class. But, but, but you can during breaks and those kind of things. So, I don't have much more information of that. I did get some research, at Ms. West's suggestion. I reached out actually to Excel and Ed, and they did some research for me. And they could not find any state that had done anything on the state level, except Florida. And Florida had said, as I told you, their legislature acted and said, can't use your cellphone in class. I don't know if we have any schools still asking students to use them. I mean, we went through a period where teachers weren't, we didn't have enough computers, and they were encouraging, bring your phone, get it out, do research on your phone, use it for a calculator. But that seems to have been a curve that we've now gone beyond, and teachers are not utilizing it. And part of that's because we've been able to buy devices for pretty much all of our students.
That is an emerging issue, big issue, because I serve on the program planning committee for the NASP meetings, and some of that was discussed when Wayne attended the last meeting. But it's a, it's a big issue that is being discussed among state board members. And so, they're just saying that, you know, we really have problems, and they're discipline problems. And I actually had several parents. parents in Montgomery County, uh, who, their children attend public schools in Montgomery County, and I got church with them, and just in a, a casual conversation, they were, one of the parents said something about so-and-so, and they were talking that they couldn't make any friends. And this is a high school student. And, and then they got, they put this policy in place, and now they're actually talking to each other, and you're thinking, well, what a great concept, you know? It's one of those, but it, it actually, that's been one of the positive things among the parents discussing the issue is that they see that positive interaction. And I would think as a teacher, it'd be very frustrating. I know I go to meetings and so forth, and people are always on the telephone. I'm guilty sometimes.
I tend to the same. We used to do workshop, was one of the best attended NASP workshops in San Antonio, I mean, San Diego rather. And their focus was also not just on restricted faculty, but it's affectable mental health.
Yes.
That's what I thought about exactly beginning here, because their impact was mental health and cellphone use, and how it degrades individualism and students picking on bullies and all the things that are more negative. We, they spend a lot of time on that.
Yes, it's a big.
They even focus some degree on what happens with the amount of teacher uses of cellphones during classrooms. So it was a, it's a very complex problem, but there are a lot of states that are working on it, at least from the present, we got, that may not have reached the stage where we hope to be. But I don't think we're pioneering. If you look, check with NASP, Dr. Mackey, because I'm certainly able to have an extensive report and maybe a recording of the service, because students presented, teachers and college leadership.
And if you want to call just Paolo, but you could also, you know Paolo. So you could talk to Paolo, but also I think Abby is, um, actually the one who's kind of spearheading that resource. She does a lot, but, but it actually was such a big issue that we put on the agenda, and we get recommendations.
The full room.
For those that weren't able to attend Excel and Ed for the presentations on cellphone usage and the policy suggestions, all of those presentations are online. I believe one presentation offered data on increased learning in the classroom. Um, if my memory serves me correctly, it was of the students assessed in schools trying this policy, the average was a thirty-seven percent increase in learning, um, in the teachers and students assessed, um, in, in the subject areas. Obviously, you'd have to drill down and, and see, but, um, among the legislators from other states that I met and talked to, they were planning on working on this. And, um, I share with Dr. Mackey, I really felt like this board has an opportunity ahead of the session to put forth, um, what, what we would like to see from our school districts. They can certainly come back and pass a law if they would like to do so, but, um, the legislatures continue to ask us to take the lead on policies that would affect, positively affect, um, our classrooms. And, um, it was the one thing at this conference that I felt like was most impactful because it reached across all grade bands and socio-economic. Um, you know, children all have cellphones, and, and they're using them for different things. Um, and I thought it was interesting, the companies that are coming up with these pouches that hang and lock. Um, I'm sure there will be more now that this policy is starting to be discussed more. Also, there was a company that is producing tiny little lockers that look like our old book lockers, but they're tiny little lockers with, that you can come in and lock your, your phone up. So I think that we're gonna see a lot, a lot more, and, and this is just our chance to get ahead of it.
Dr. Mackey, in the past, this board is the board that took the lead, and I could go down a long list. One of them, one of the first was actually, actually several. The one was teacher testing. You know, we couldn't go beyond the state boards to do any type of, um, yeah, background checking. But this is an area like the, the example with, that you sent out memo to the local school systems. We also, many years ago, actually set a policy, and you know the, the year because it's in the administrative code. But I think that's probably the best thing we can do, and that way they can do, we can provide training or information, because NASP has a lot of it, and that's specific to state school board members. And I think that that's one area where we need to do it versus the legislature doing it. And, but require it, we can still require a policy.
Right.
But they still have to report. And if they're not doing it, then, you know, the state department can take the lead on that as well. But to me, that gives them the opportunity like Montgomery County, um, I think it's great when locals do that. But we, we can, as, um, the chair, the vice chair was saying, we can also, um, take the lead as a board, and I think that's really, if you can do that.
I'm hearing no opposition. So what we'll plan then in, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna disagree with what Bill was saying as well, with Ms. West, that it's an opportunity for us to be proactive rather than reactive, so I definitely support.
So we'll bring that draft resolution in, in January. I'll let the lawyers work that out, but, but, uh, to, um, require the districts to do that. And so, but think, if you, here's what I would ask of you. A lot of y'all spend a lot of time talking to your superintendents and principals. Will you ask your superintendents kind of what they think, what they, you know, and then, um, and maybe what they are doing now, and then give some feedback, if you will, to Mr. Markham and myself, and so we can, as we're drafting that, think crafty exactly. And we'll do that too, but obviously, if they, if y'all would talk to them, just kind of help us with that. And, um, and I'll probably have Tina drafting it over there, so just so you, if you wanna talk to her about it, because she'll be thinking about the legal part too, and what can we say and what can't we do so that we do it right. But we'll, we'll have that ready for you in January, I think it's January ninth, early, early meeting in January.
Eleven.
Eleven. Eleven.
So your update, Dr. Mackey?
Yeah, so I, yes, ma'am, thank you. I don't really have a lot to update you on today. I have your books from Ms. Short. I want, um, I know that Mr. Markham and Dr. Chestnut have been talking about the board retreat, so I'd like to let her or you and her talk a little bit about that and the agenda. Um, but I don't really have that much. I did want to remind you, and I, I know I, I think I said this last week in the email, but just that the next couple of weeks are kind of different because we will have a lot of folks taking time, taking their leave time. Uh, most of the people in this building are, are non-exempt employees, have to use leave or burn it by the end of the year. And I, like, like Nora and Leanne and Patricia, they have a lot of leave to take. And so they, they are always so good about kind of making sure somebody's got things covered all the time, um, so that, you know, the phones get answered and those kind of things. But, but it will be more difficult if you like, ask, can I get this huge report tomorrow? The most likely answer over the next couple of weeks is no. Not so you can't get it, but it'll take more time if it's something a lot of people have to collaborate on. Um, schools, of course, are starting to close down tomorrow, and so most of them will be closed. We will be open over the holidays, but we, things will move more slowly. We will, um, be back, so your packets for the January meeting have to go out on January fourth or something. It's really soon after the holiday. So again, things like what I just committed to do, like they're probably already in a little panic thinking about, because we had to get all that together essentially before, um, we leave for the, the holiday break, um, for the New Year's break and leave. So, but, but I've already been thinking about that one, so we'll move pretty fast. Uh, then we'll come back in January, it'll move, you know, things will move quickly, and then the legislature will be back in February. Um, if you do have something that comes up, I'm not asking them to, go ahead and reach out to us. I'm just saying it might take a little more time to find data and reports and things like that if you need something. So the retreat, same thing?
Yes. I want you to, I want to first thank Chuck Markham for working with me and making sure that we are headed in the right direction with the January board retreat. What we're doing, we're pretty much following, uh, the framework that's been, um, used the last two years, where we went to Auburn University as well as, uh, University of Alabama. This year, we will be going to Alabama State University, and just want to commend Dr. Clinton Ross and his team for opening the doors for us to come. So if you would, mark your calendar for January thirtieth, just as we've done, uh, the last two years, we will come in, uh, that evening and have board discussion and dinner. When we come back, uh, next month, we'll have specific details about our day on January thirty-first. We're excited also to collaborate with Montgomery Public Schools and Dr. Melvin Brown. And so I think that you'll be really, uh, pleased and excited about the things that we have planned for, uh, January's retreat. But you'll get, uh, complete details of what will be taking place in our next meeting, or maybe even prior to our next meeting. But if you just mark your calendar for, uh, January thirtieth, starting at four-thirty, and, uh, dinner at six, and then again, starting on January thirty-first, eight o'clock breakfast. But we have a great day planned. Thank you.
For this retreat, will we just select our own hotels?
Yes.
Okay. So we won't all go in to?
No.
Perfect. Okay. That's the only question.
I was supposed to. Well, I've done.
Any questions?
Yes. Tell me, you may have to tell me what I was supposed to do.
Which slide?
Oh, 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 I did have the SSUT slide. Oh, thank you. It, I, he's in it in St. Dakota. I'm sorry about that. So I will, um, I do have one other thing. So, um, if you will look, I had a question. Ms. West asked me to, to address the simplified seller's use tax, and I know she's had some questions from board members. So I, I borrowed this actually from Ryan Hollinsworth, and I, I knew they did a really good graphic for superintendents a couple of years ago, and he said, yes, I'll find it for you and send it. So I want to give him credit. Uh, but I'm gonna stand up like a teacher here and just look. So simplified seller's use tax is the online sales tax, and there's a lot of discussion about it, um, and how much goes to counties, how much goes to cities, and what the schools get. So this is what you currently see, um, with an eight cent tax. So all of us who are purchasing, uh, from Am, Amazon and other online vendors, um, we're paying eight cents sales tax on those, those purchases. Now, there is some caveat to that, because some of you, not, maybe some of our board members and those in the audience, but some people are purchasing, say, from, uh, Walmart, to use a vendor, or Target, and then you're going there to pick it up. So you're purchasing online, but you're picking it up. But you're actually buying from a store in, in the county, so you're probably paying the rate of the county. It's, even though you're buying it online, it is not an online sale because you're buying it from a local store. So that's a little different. But if you're buying it from an out-of-state vendor and having it shipped to your house or something like that, then you're, then the sales tax is eight cents, whereas in most communities in the state it's ten cents. Of that eight cents, half goes to, um, the state treasury and half goes to counties and municipalities. Of the half that comes to state treasury, uh, three cents or seventy-five percent of that, well, here's some math for you today. So, uh, Dr. Anderson's back there checking the math. It's seventy-five percent of the fifty percent. So it's actually thirty-seven and a half percent of the whole, the whole tax goes to the general fund, the fund, mental health and all those other services. So a quarter of that, or twelve and a half, uh, cents off of every dollar, comes to the Education Trust Fund, and it's spent in the foundation program just like every other penny that comes into the foundation program. Okay? On the other side, what goes, and this has been the controversial piece, what goes to municipalities, used to be split half and half. So the counties got half of it, and the cities got half of it, and then it was distributed to them based on population. The legislature made a change in twenty-eighteen, and so effective January one, twenty-nineteen, it's now splitting forty, sixty, forty percent to the counties and sixty percent to the cities. The cities argued that they, um, most of the stores are located in towns, and so they are the ones losing business rather than the counties losing business. So they argued that for the legislature, and they got that fifty-fifty split moved to a sixty-forty split. Now, here's what's been controversial about this in most communities in the state. In most places of the ten cent or the ten, you know, ten percent tax, there's some portion that's dedicated to schools. Not in every community, but like here in Montgomery County, we have a one cent sales tax for schools. Doesn't go to the state, it goes to the local schools, and it's divided on a, a pro rata share. It's countywide sales tax. We pay it in Montgomery County. You don't see that anywhere here. So on this side over here, the local schools are completely cut out. They are getting no money from online sales. And, but they are getting money. If you go down to Target and buy your stuff, they're getting money. If you go online and buy it, the schools are getting nothing. Now, at the state level, we're getting something, but again, it's a little different because if you go, I don't know why I'm picking on Target today, but if you go to Target, Bed, Bath &amp; Yarn, I've spent a lot of time in there the last month.
You're kind.
A lot of money. Not that one, then some other place I've spent time in, uh, Bad Body Works. They have great candles. I just carry a bag, just carry a bag, carry a bag and put out my card at the end. But great places. Okay. But we go there and buy a candle, we pay ten cent sales tax. One penny of that goes to the schools in Montgomery County, but four cents of it goes to the Education Trust Fund. If I buy that candle online, nothing goes to the local schools, and not, and one penny, not four cents, goes to the state trust, Education Trust Fund. So we, so we are, in other words, there's less money going into schools for every online purchase than in-store purchase. So Morgan County did a local bill, and they, they took the, basically, the, I don't want to completely mix this up, but they took part of or maybe all of the county tax and said that actually is gonna go straight to the schools now, and just skip the county commission. Big fight between county commissions and, and the schools and all that. But it was, but it only affected that one county. Um, there's been talk about a statewide bill that would do this. So there is actually a bill filed now, prefiled, that would take this eight cents up to nine and a quarter, not nine and a half cents, and that other one and a half cents would only go to schools. So don't ask me to explain the whole technicalities of the bill, but, but there is a bill filed that would take it to nine and a half cents for online, so it'd still be a half cent less than most in-store purchases in the state. And that extra penny and a half would go to the schools. So now there's, now there's discussion among some legislators about, we don't want to raise the tax, but we are willing to reconsider this distribution to make sure the local schools do get some. Um, it's not really been for, on our part, it's not really affected us yet because even though we're getting less off online sales and in-store sales, when you look at the two, I, I know you may have a lot of packages arriving at your house right now, but actually, still, in-person sales hugely outweigh online sales. So if you think about big purchases that people made, um, most of those are still in-store sales. And so it's still, it's a, it's a big area. And of course, the area where we get the most money in the Education Trust Fund is not sales tax, it's actually income tax. So, which is not affected by this, obviously. But, but you've heard, I know that a lot of you are hearing discussion about this, because you've got a lot of county commissioners that are very nervous about such statewide bill that would do what they did in Morgan County and actually take this money from them. Got a lot of mayors that are worried about that too. And, um, there will probably, this will probably be a hot discussion in this legislative session. But realize, most of that discussion's gonna be about this side, the local part of it, not about the state. I've really not heard any discussion about changing the state portion. Uh, I will tell you, this Uh, I will tell you, this, you know, this goes way back to mid-teens. You know, I do wish, obviously, that we would get more of it into education. But, I do understand that when this happened, the general fund was absolutely drying up, and, uh, mental health services and other services were being cut, draconian cuts. And so, that's why they did this new online sales tax. Prior to that, if you remember, you had to declare your online purchases on your state income tax, and then pay the tax through your income tax form. But it was done purely on a, um, an honorary system, not a, there was no way to do checks and balances on that.
That's why we say shop local.
Shop local, yes. So, uh, that's, so that's my math lesson for today, but I'd be glad to ask you questions about it.
Any questions?
If you do get questions from your county commissioners or your mayor, look, this is in your assembly, you're welcome to it. And I would be glad to also talk individually to any of you to try to help you think through it.
Thank you, thank you. I have been approached by some commissioners and sheriff. Who filled them in detail. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions before we adjourn today? All right. I wish everybody a Merry Christmas. It is one fifty-four, and we are adjourned. See you next month.
Have your books here, your, um, sure.